Right, good morning, members. My name is councillor Harry Saville and I am the Chair for Democratic Services Committee. Welcome back to all of you in the new year. As you all know, today's meeting is a multi-location meeting in live or whatever. I think the majority of members are attending remotely when a rather scarcely filled chamber this morning here in Bodleandab. The meeting, as usual, will be livestreamed and recorded and it will be available for viewing after the meeting. Should the livestreaming fail, the meeting will continue and a recording will be available through the council's website following the conclusion of the meeting. Can I remind members that translation facilities are available and that those attending remotely should select your language of choice? For those of you wishing to speak in the chamber, please raise your physical hand as usual and for those of you joining the meeting via Zoom, please use the raised hand function. I'd really like to stress that as I try and keep an eye on Zoom, it's much easier to spot a small raised hand icon rather than a physical one, so please, please do use that function. Also, for those of you attending remotely, please note that not everyone in the chamber will be able to monitor the chat function on Zoom throughout the meeting. Again, for those of you attending remotely, please leave your camera on throughout the debate and especially when voting in order to maintain the integrity of the decision-making process. If you do need to leave a meeting temporarily, it would be appreciated if you could pop a quick message in the chat function so one of the Democratic Services team to my left or right can spot that and just monitor who's in the meeting and who isn't. Of course, we expect everyone present and participating in the meeting to conduct themselves appropriately and be respectful to each other. That applies to members, officers and any members of the public. So when I open a debate up to members, I will ask committee members to speak and put their questions first, followed by non-committee members. As usual, we don't wish to stifle debate, but I would ask that any questions are focused on subject matter and if any speeches are going on for an undue length, I will refer to the provisions in our standing orders. So we'll move on to the main business for today. First of all, do we have any apologies for absence? Sally?
Yeah, apologies been received from councillors Sharon Dolman, Mandy Hawkins, Tom Montgomery and Liz Roberts.
Okay, and do we have any apologies from more? I can't see any. Okay, so that brings us to item two, declarations of interest. As usual, please can you declare both the existence of the nature of interests? Paul, Tim? Okay. That brings us to item three, urgent matters. I'm not aware of any. So just a couple of things before we get stuck in properly. Members may recall that our last meeting, we had a discussion around relocation of Democratic Services functions to Croye Petla and there was some discussion about the size of the public gallery area. I did set at that meeting, I would write to the monitoring officer to seek some advice and that would be circulated amongst members of the committee. You have had that advice, it's not up for discussion today, but if members do have any concerns, please do let myself, Sean Williams, Matt George, you know. Hopefully that advice from that will have been helpful. I also would just like to touch on the scrutiny review we're currently undertaking. Members should have recently been sent a questionnaire that's been put together by Sean Williams and our Democratic Services team. So I'd just like to plug that please can members make every effort to complete that and return that. Also, as we touched on at the last meeting, the working group update this committee or ensure this committee is updated on its progress. And I believe that has taken place. So I thought it'd be helpful just to cover those few points. Before we move on as well, we're joined by Fran Lewis and Matt George to take us through item five, the panel performance assessment arrangements, as Fran needs to be away earlier from this meeting than Sean Williams, who will be taking what item four. I've decided we'll switch the items around, so we'll start with item 5A. So this is the panel performance assessment arrangement. So I will hand over to Fran and Matt to take us through this.
Thank you, Chair. Members, yeah, the report's about the need to make detailed arrangements for the council's panel performance assessment as required by the Law Government and Elections Act as Wednesday 21. And that act requires that the council make arrangements so at least once during the period between two consecutive ordinary election of councillors, panels appointed to assess the extent to which the councils meet in their performance requirements. And those are defined as the extent to which the councils exercising its functions effectively, using its resources economically efficiently and effectively, and has effective governance in place for securing those matters. The report sets out the details of the consultation requirements and the three stages for assessment, including preparation, assessment and follow-up, and those matters are detailed at paragraph 3.4 of the report. Fran is also here to speak on those matters in a bit more detail as they relate specifically to performance, so I'm not going to speak in any detail about them myself. I want to primarily talk about where responsibility for the arrangements should sit and the need to set out in the constitution where the responsibility for making those arrangements sit. And that's because, as a slight quirk, I suppose, in legislation is that the responsibility for where the function for making the arrangement sits within the council is a matter of local choice. And that means that the council decides whether that function will be a council function or a cabinet function. And once the decision is made, the constitution will need to reflect the position. Paragraph 3.6 of the report sets out the proposals for those arrangements here at Conwy, County Bureau of Council. And specifically, it's proposed that responsibility for making detailed arrangements for the panel performance assessment sits with cabinet. And that will involve the development of a scoping document and the appointment of the performance assessment panel. It's also proposed that drafting the response to the panel's report would be a cabinet function. And there are a few reasons for that. First, that's consistent with how the council deals with other similar matters such as decisions on budget, planning policy and other performance matters. And it's also felt that it's the most practical approach because there are likely to be numerous reports requiring timely decisions at different stages throughout the process of appointing and scoping the work for the panel, as well as agreeing the response. And there'll be a need to be quite agile during that process. The approach would maintain elected member input to the process and also hold cabinet to account for the outcome. Members will note that the report was taken to Governance and Audit Committee in November, and that's because that committee has an important role in terms of preparing the detailed scoping document for the assessment. And it's proposed that this document will be drafted between February and May this year with the senior management team, cabinet and governance and audit committee involved in that process. And then the final scope and appointment of panelists will be subject to democratic issues and making process in June and July. Cabinet would also need to seek feedback from the Governance Audit Committee on the management response. And then the final outcome of the assessment must then be presented at a full meeting of council. So the report is before Democratic Services Committees, the proposals will require amendment to the constitution to reflect the arrangements. And the recommendation is that the committee recommends to council that the responsibility for making detailed arrangements for the panel performance assessment specifically stages one, Roman New Rule 1, one Roman New Rule 2, and three, Roman New Rule 2 sits with the executive. And that appropriate amendments are made to the constitution to reflect panel performance assessment arrangements outlined in the report. And with that, Chair, I'll hand over to Fran just to speak a little bit more about the panel assessment appointment process.
Yeah, Matt? First, I just would like to thank Yola McGregor, who had to give his apologies today, who has done the work with his small team, with Janice and Rachel, who has completed the work to prepare us for a panel assessment. And we're very fortunate that Yola has experience with this, having done the same process for Dembisher before he moved across to his new appointment. So that's excellent to have that experience. In terms of the panel assessment, those members who have been here for many years will know that this is not new to us. Many years ago, we did undertake a corporate assessment. This is more extensive, but we are familiar with this process. So in terms of how the panel assessment will work, as Matt explained, this is a statutory requirement. So every council in Wales must undertake a panel performance assessment once during their administration. And in terms of engagements, just to give assurance to members, you know, you will all be involved. There will be a requirement to consult with local people, with businesses, with staff, trade unions and obviously draft reports and response to reports will come through the democratic process. In terms of the stages then, they are outlined under paragraph 3.4. So the first that Matt's just referred to is the starting of the scoping documents. So that's what we're planning to start very soon in terms of identifying what is it? What's the subject matter that would be of benefit to the authority to focus on to have this external constructive challenge? Once that process has been completed, we're proposing that we work with WLGA, who have facilitated this process for other councils, and they will assist us with the appointment of the performance assessment panel. And that, again, that panel makeup will reflect people with experience in the subject matter that we've identified in the scoping documents. It will require that there is an independent chair and they will require that there is an elected member and a senior manager from another local authority or a public sector organisation. But again, that'll be determined on the subject matter we choose. The actual assessment is a four-day assessment that's aiming to take place in the autumn of this year, hopefully in September. That involves document reviews, it involves one-to-one interviews, involves focus groups. So again, depending on the subject matter, that may well involve staff and elected members during that four-day assessment. There'll be daily feedback to the leader and chief executive and on the final day of the assessment, a presentation of the key findings. And then, once that draft report is issued to us as an authority, we have a requirement to draft a response and that will be done in conjunction with the Governance and Audit Committee. So Governance and Audit Committee may then make recommendations for changes to that draft. And once that response report has been finalized, we then need to make sure that it's published. So that'll be published on our website and also shared with Audit Wales, Eston, CIW and Welsh Ministers. So we've explained into 3.5 that the arrangements for the panel performance is a matter of local choice, but it makes sense that we work with WLGA, given that their support would be at no cost to us. And it's certainly something that we will need help with in terms of capacity. I think the only other aspect I wanted to draw attention to is that we have been obviously working closely with those local authorities that have already gone through this process and certainly asked them how it's gone and what's their lessons learned. And again, as Matt has explained, from a practical point of view, delegating that responsibility to the executive has been a common practice from a practical point of views that's been implemented in those local authorities that have gone through the process so far. And I think that's about all I wanted to say, really. Hand back to you, Chair.
Right, Fran, Matt, thank you for that. So, members, I trust will have read the report and will be familiar with the recommendation, which is that we, as a committee, recommend to council that the responsibility for the detailed aspects that Matt and Fran have outlined sits with cabinet and that the constitution is updated to reflect that. Members? Paul?
Thanks, Chair. I've got a couple of questions and the context in which I'm asking these questions is that some people will remember Frost on Monday. The chief executive gave me some direct advice when I was challenging the scrutiny of the panel that was set up to look at the shared prosperity fund. And he reminded me, and others, I think, that we need to be very rigorous in scrutinising when we're setting up new systems and new panels. And maybe in that case, we didn't scrutinise thoroughly enough. So it's in that context that I asked these two questions. What are the specific benefits to the residents of the cabinet dealing with this rather than the council? And I was very conscious that Matt said the reason for the proposals that the cabinet deals with this was to do with agility. So I want to drill down a bit more on why that benefits the residents, because at the end of the day, this isn't about the self-interest of the council as such, it is of the self-interest of the residents. So I wanted just pursue that issue a bit. And the next issue, which I want to pursue, is this issue of, again, the specific details. I think the term is the subject matter to be considered. So how under the arrangements will the subject matter be chosen and dealt?
Okay, Paul, thank you for those questions. So we've obviously got Matt and Fran, we have absolute Chris Kate, our portfolio holder. So who would you like to pose that to? Okay, well, look, I'll hand over to Matt and Fran in that case.
I'm quite happy to start and then, yeah. Yeah, I mean, ultimately, one of the things that has come through our wider discussions around the review of the corporate plan and our resilience programme has been about efficiency and productivity. So I guess the key benefit to our residents is the agility and timeliness of getting decisions through. Because whilst we've got, you know, a window from January to September, there's, you know, there's going to be a lot of work during this time. So timely and quick decisions and efficient use of both officer and elected member time, I would suggest, would be of benefit to residents. And whilst I appreciate members aren't privy to this yet because the budget consultation hasn't closed, we do know that one of the themes that is coming through from residents around our budget consultation is around efficiency and productivity. So I think in that respect, it would be welcomed from residents. In terms of the second part, the subject matter, as detailed in the report, that work will start next month and will be about reflecting on our risks, our issues, our challenges and making a decision as to where the most benefit would be for the authority to have that external peer challenge so that we can improve and hopefully learn from good practice elsewhere.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, on the productivity and efficiency issue, in a sense, there's no dispute about that. My worry always is, though, if the executive's doing the job, are they, is the scrutiny effective and are we holding their feet to the fire? And the second point on the subject matter, are we saying that no subject matter is sort of out of bounds? And what influence can councillors have on what that subject matter is that's brought forward?
Yeah, just first of all, Chair, clearly, I think I did talk about the importance of the Governance and Audit Committee's input into this. So I suppose in terms of, in terms of that input, that should answer that question. Governance and Audit Committee playing an important role in this and that's a statutory requirement. So I think that probably answers that question.
Leader?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Paul, for the question. Obviously, this is a statutory duty, but what I would reference is, I absolutely welcome external bodies coming in. We were the first council in Wales to invite the peer reviews in the WLGA, but the first council in Wales invited Siphrin. The subject matter is set out in legislation. This is a procedural thing to kind of set that up and it'll come back through the democratic process and these are the people that we feel should do the scrutiny. Then it's their scrutiny, it's actually, they come in and they look at everything we do and that comes back through the democratic process. But I think it's 3.9 sets out, it's literally the procedural, how this physically will work. And then it comes back to the democratic process in June and July to approve that. I would make the point that this is what every other authority has done. It's not unique to Conwy. It's just literally hard to be physically get from A to B, bring it back to democracy and this is how this will work. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so I hope that gives you some reassurance, Paul, that this is a stage in a process, essentially.
All good, Paul? Fantastic. Right, I can't see any virtual hands up. I can now. Anne McCaffrey?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm not sure if this is a duplication of one of Paul's points, but for me, first of all, I welcome this as a process. I think engagement is a key theme for us to improve. So I think that this is now a statutory duty and it will be as comprehensive as is laid out in the report and that residents and obviously partners and town and community council have the opportunity to interact with us. So I think that's really useful. But I think the power of it in some respects depends upon the scoping document. And as I can see, very much that's going to be the few rather than the many, it looks like, because it's going to be, you know, senior management team, cabinet, governance and audit committee. And I do wonder, is, before that gets, if you like, adopted or agreed, is that going to, is there going to be any sort of public opportunity to understand what that is before it gets signed off by whoever? Because I think there's, there can be a danger in these things that, you know, I completely get the bit about cabinet leading and obviously we do have to make cabinet accountable, et cetera. But I think there's an opportunity to ensure and an obligation to ensure that backbenchers have actually got an ability to add value, to ensure that this quite comprehensive process actually is focusing on the right things according to all backbenchers. So I just wonder, is that going to be, is there going to be any public reports on that as it goes, as the work goes through before that gets sort of finalised? So that's my sort of first point. And then the second point, I mean, as great as some of these things are, sometimes they end up being, I don't know, covert and minimalistic and very drawn out in terms of how they actually get back to backbenchers. I mean, I'm thinking about, Charlie mentioned that we had peer review and completely on board with that. But, you know, we're now two years later from the peer review and it's only at the end of this month that we will see a realistically finalised resilience plan. So I think the outcome and the sort of feedback on the sort of outcome is also not quite clear just about when that actually comes to full council so that we can be making, doing this at pace and maximising the impact. So those are my sort of two questions. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you for those. They directed officers, leader?
I'm happy to take it. Thanks, Anne. Yeah, I'd refer to 3.9 in the document and in terms of the democratic process. So the scope and document will be drafted between February and May, senior management team, cabinet and the governance and audit committee. It'll then come back through democratic decision process in June and July. Will it be full council map that approves the final document or?
The final report, it goes to full councils.
Yes, the final report comes to full council and it has to be published as soon as possible. So...
It's the scoping document I'm talking about because it's the thing that informs the whole process, Charlie. That's the bit I'm unclear, but how do we get it signed off on that? That was my first point.
So, yeah, as in 3.9, Anne, it'll be cabinet and SMT and the audit committee and then it'll come back through cabinet for approval.
So the public and the backbenchers will be able to get involved and understand what that scoping document looks like before it gets signed off by yourselves? Is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely, yeah.
Fine, okay, thanks for that, Charlie. I just wasn't clear about that. And then in terms of timing and sort of speed of the report coming back to members?
Anne, I'm afraid we've lost you. You may want to turn your video feed off.
Yeah, okay, sorry about that. Yeah, just a second point was about when can we expect that members and the public will actually see the final report? And also with a view to potentially, I assume some action plan will come out of that? Thanks.
It's set out, I think, in the actual scope and document the WLGA on, but I'm beginning October next year, essentially, as well, Fran, this year, sorry, I keep forgetting, we're in 25, apologies. October this year is when it will be published.
Okay, thanks very much, Charlie, thanks.
I'd just like to seek some clarification quickly. I think it probably does pick up on the points made by Paul and Anne. So the final report comes out at the end of the process. That will go to the Governance and Audit Committee, they'll make recommendations. Cabinet will respond to that and if any recommendations they don't agree with cabinet, set out why they don't agree. And that goes to full council. So members will have a full opportunity at that point to deliberate it, pick its part, raise any concerns. And in terms of this important scoping document and the appointment of panelists, yes, it is a cabinet decision, but it would be subject to calling if backbenchers had any concerns, wouldn't it?
Any cabinet decisions subject to calling?
That's what I expected. Fantastic, thank you. Right, members, are there any more questions, queries? No? Okay, well, look, in that case, I am quite happy to propose the recommendation set out in the report. So it'd be really clear, that's that we as a committee recommend to council that the responsibility for detailed arrangements, I think specifically those are stages 1, 1, 1, 2, 3, 2 are delegated to the cabinet and that changes are made to the constitution to reflect that. Do I have a second? And that's seconded by councillor Paul Lucock. So in that case, can we have a show of hands or those in favour? Okay, do we have anyone against? And any abstentions? No, okay, appears to be unanimous, members. Thank you for that. So this brings us now on to our next item. So this is item four, which is regarding the governance of national park authorities. So this report has been taken by Sean Williams, our head of Democratic Services. So I will hand over to Sean.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So just to give a little bit of background, Audit Wales undertook a review of the governance of national park authorities and the review sought to answer the question, do special purpose local authorities in Wales have effective governance arrangements that support good outcomes for citizens? And the review looked specifically at three national park authorities in Wales. In line with our protocol where audit reports make recommendations that have relevance to the council, the report and responding action plan is shared with the relevant committee. Generally, this tends to be a scrutiny committee, but in this instance, it was felt more appropriate to come to Democratic Services Committee because it's more around member development. because it's more around member development. Yeah, so it, it's come to this committee to test the strength of the council's response. And there is only one recommendation pertaining to improving accountability for members, which, which is in the Wales Audit Document. But we have developed the, we've put together a draft action plan for Democratic Services to consider. If you, sorry, page 35, I think that says. So the proposals are for us to look at our current arrangements, which are also included as an appendix to the report. And that can be found on page 37. And, and I have to, to say, you know, our current arrangements do require feedback from representatives certain representatives on outside organisations to report back regularly. And our agreement says that it should be twice yearly. I think that we have kind of slipped to annually. So we'll, our, our intention is to pick up on, on that and make sure that our representatives do report back more regularly and that we do have regular updates in the member, member bulletin. So we have the arrangements in place, we just need to tighten up on them. We do liaise with our colleagues in the National Park Authority about meetings to make sure that we don't clash. So that obviously our representatives don't have that dilemma as to whether they should go to one of our committees or, or a national park committee. And then in terms of the member development framework, in Conway, we use the WLGA development framework and that, that is open to national park authorities as well. I think the difficulty with some of these national reviews is that some of the recommendations come through and aren't always as relevant to some national park authorities as they may be to other, other authorities. I'm pretty confident, and it would be interesting actually, because we have got some members online that have been members of the National Park Authority, to, to get a, a view from them. My, my opinion is that there is a good training framework within the National Park Authority. But that isn't to say that we won't look at it. And we have, we do know that our colleagues in Powys Council are, are, are looking at developing a separate framework or building on the WLGA framework. And we can look at that to see whether there's any improvements that we can make from a Conway perspective. So the action plan is there. In terms of the recommendations, we are asking Democratic Services Committee to scrutinize the effectiveness of the actions put in place to respond to the recommendations from the audit report. And to that Democratic Services Committee, refer the report and the action plan to the Governance and Audit Committee to provide assurance that the content has been acknowledged and that proactive steps have been made to address the recommendations included within the report.
Right, Sean, thank you for that. Members, have we got any questions, observations? Paul?
Yeah, I, I suspect like most residents, the Aery Park Authority is a bit of a secret garden to me. How it operates and what it does. But that may be, I could see Austin flinging his face at me, that may be because of my ignorance. But I do remember, because it's, it's the only occasion that I've felt the need to engage with Iver and Billwyn on matters in relation to the Park Authority. I must admit, I didn't feel I really got a response to those concerns. And so I think, not just for me, but for people generally, a better understanding about how we can call the Park Authority to account would be helpful. And if they come, our, our representatives come back twice a year and give a report that we can then question them on and the specific details, then I think that is a positive, positive way forward.
Paul, thank you, and we'll go to councillor Anne McCaffrey.
Yep, thanks, Chair, and I've turned my, my camera off in advance. I'm, I'm happy with the, the action plan. I think obviously everything's covered in, in terms of the recommendation. But the point perhaps I'd, I'd like to raise is, is one that's mentioned on page 24 of the report. And that's about the selection process that, that we use to recruit to the three positions that Commey Council has on the national park. With no disrespect to, to any of our current members, I think only one of them actually resides within the national park itself. And I think the report and the, and the audit feedback is that, you know, that representation is important for those who actually represent or elected to represent national parks of various. So I just wonder if we should put in scope a recommendation to review our selection process. I mean, I, I gather there's a practice here, but it would appear that, as I say, only we've got three members, but only one of them actually resides within the national park. So I just perhaps like to question, should that, we have something about that on our action plan?
Hey, Anne, thank you for that. I'll bring Sean Williams in to pick up that, that point, Sean.
Yeah, thanks, councillor Anne. And I'm, I'm not sure that we can actually, because there are conflicting, not, not even conflicting requirements. You'll note in the report that there is a requirement for the appointments to be made based on political balance. Now, that in itself will narrow down the, 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 the members that are eligible then to, to go to be selected for, for the national park. So in Conway, I think it's three elected members that we have on the national park. So in, in line with the political balance requirements, that means that the three largest groups within Conway are all eligible to nominate one, one member on, onto the park authority. It is then, as with other appointments, we go to the group leaders. There is, you know, one particular group that, that is eligible and entitled to make an appointment, but doesn't necessarily have an elected member residing in the national park. That's through no fault of, of the group. They can still take that entitlement. So there is always that, that conflict. And I don't feel that we can do anything to, well, we can't ignore the political balance requirements. There's reference there to the protocol that has been developed regarding appointments to national parks. We do adhere to that, so I'm not quite sure that there is anything else that we, we can do.
Perhaps maybe, yeah, could I just come back on that? I, I, I take the point completely, Sean. But I just wonder, given that governance of the national park is, has been under review and obviously part of their aims is to be representative and they themselves raise it as potentially an issue. I wonder if we could pick up with the national park and, and actually just look at, could that protocol be improved? Is it timely to ensure that it's over, i- it's reviewed? Because patiently, representation of people who actually live in the national park and just, and interact with the national park from an operational point of view, it's actually quite important. And I think some of the, some of the, the quotes here, like, no one else wanted to go on it. So I'm there to make up the numbers. I'm not suggesting for one minute that that's the, the view of any of our members. But, you know, that, that we're missing a trick, I think. And I just wonder if it's opportune to go back and ask for the, for the protocol to be reviewed?
Anne, thank you for that, I, I think that is a reasonable point. Sean has said she's got some comments she'd like to make, so I'll pass over to Sean.
Only in as much as if, my, my personal opinion is that if Wales Audit thought that the protocol needed to be improved, I would have thought that that would have been a recommendation coming through the, the review. I mean, I don't think there's any harm in us feeding that back to, to the National Park Authority. But I think, you know, the, the protocol from memory does say something like wherever possible, representation should be from elected members that are within the national park area. But, but as I say, councillor Anne, that isn't always possible because ultimately you have to comply with the political balance requirements.
So perhaps could I just propose then that we, we give that feedback as part of the recommendations coming from Democratic Services?
I think you absolutely can be, the question I would have, I'm going to help or hope that Sean can help me with this. The recommendations we've got within this report are very much in terms of actions that this council are undertaking. So I would just like to be very clear as to where we're going to provide that feedback to, because the question I, I would have, just having had a look at the report, there's reference to a protocol for selecting or appointing national park representatives. I'm assuming there is some statutory element which would be set out in Welsh government slash centre legislation. So I think it would be helpful to know who we're providing that feedback to, because with the best one in the world, we could provide that feedback to anyone if what we're asking for is fundamentally unlawful. That's a matter that would need to be raised with Welsh government. I, I hope I'm not across purposes there. Sean?
I, I, I agree councillor Harry, and I'm desperately trying to find the protocol but failing. So without knowing who owns the protocol. And, and I also think we need to consider whether it's the relit office committee to make those types of recommendations. Considering that this is more about member development and training.
Yes, right. Anne, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'd suggest, what I'm going to suggest to the committee, because everything you've said, I think, very valid points there. However, we're specifically looking today at recommending the specific actions we've got within this, this action plan onto the Governance and Audit Committee so they can want to implementation. What I think perhaps would be useful would be if we stick with that specific ask for today, but the issues you've raised, I think that'd be worth perhaps myself, the head of Democratic Services and perhaps Cabinet looking at to see if there is a bit of work we could do around that at a later date. So if you're happy, all those points taken on board, if we can park from there and I will see if we can pick them up in a meaningful way soon.
Yeah, as long as it's meaningful, Harry, and it's around challenging perhaps the protocol and its impact. Because if the impact of the protocol doesn't really add value on the ground, that's the point I'm making. But, you know, I'm happy to leave it with you as long as you, you will pick up all of the points that, that I've raised. Thanks, Chair.
I can only promise I will do my absolute best. Sean would like to come back in, having found some information.
Sorry councillor Anne, yeah, just, just found it. So, yeah, yeah, it, it is a, a Welsh government protocol, yeah, yeah.
And therefore that's where the feedback needs to go to, isn't it, if we're agreeable? Thanks, Chair.
Most likely. Let's pick that up separately, but we'll certainly look into it. Right, okay, so I've now got a list of speakers, I've got Austin Roberts, then Chris Hughes and then Geronwy Edwards.
Go off the national park thing, as that was to me.
Oh, hear me, go on.
No, having sat on the national park several times in different periods of the national park, even before it was a national park, it was just a subcommittee of winner. The, the system that is in place is for political balance, same as this authority is for political balance. And we have had members from, from groups out that don't actually sit within, walk within the park. It has worked very well. There's six members on the national park appointed by the Welsh Government as well. Now, many of those don't actually have any connection with the national parks. And there was a member when I was there, one from Wrexham and one from Fenshaw. So it gives a balance of different views of people that live within the park. People also use the park and value the park. So to try and change that and do away with political balance, I think would be a mistake firstly.
Points taken and noted, thank you for that. Austin?
Yeah, I'm back in globally one.
Okay, can you hear me? Sean Benlin has covered most of what I wanted to say. But going back to Anne's point, in, to a certain degree, I do feel that the representative should live within the park or as close as possible. As you know, Plaid Cymru, the majority of the wards within the park in Conway are being represented by councillors who are members of Plaid Cymru group. Our representative at the moment is Nia and Nia lives in Llanrewst, which is just outside of the park. But a part of her ward is within the park. So she does meet the criteria. The Conservatives are represented by Jo Nettle and she does amazing work, as I understand. But they have one member in their group who does represent a ward which is in the park, which is Lambeth Rechen. To a degree, I agree with what Anne, what councillor Anne McCaffrey has said. But as Geronwy has pointed out, the rule says that there must be political balance. And the rules state that the leaders of the group will decide who they choose as members of the panel. So I, as a leader, will always try my best to ensure that our representative is within the park. Because we represent farmers and a lot of farmers within the park. Thank you.
Thank you for that, please, Sean, I'd like to respond.
Only because I've got sight of the protocol, haven't I? Councillor Austin, Austin and councillor Gomme perfectly correct. You know, the protocol outlines the legal framework, which includes the political balance requirements. And then it sets out key principles for selection. So yes, in Conway, our arrangements are that the group leaders do, you know, consult with their groups to identify who wants to go on the, on not just this outside organisation, other outside organisations. But I do know for a fact in this instance that we, we share this protocol with the group leaders when we're asking them to identify who they want to go on to the National Park Authority. And the key principles are of selection are very clear within the protocol. It's, it, you know, but very quickly, it's about merit, equal opportunities, transparency, commitment to the national park's purposes, electoral wards, which I will expand on in a minute, and then being main park communities, and then providing stability as well. Now, the part around the electoral wards says, in accordance with the legislation, the aim should be to give priority in selection to those councillors who are wards wholly or partly within the relevant national park boundary. Selection of councillors with electoral wards some distance away from the park should be avoided where possible, subject to satisfying the political balance requirements. Now, this, this protocol is shared with group leaders and as councillor Austin says, you know, group leaders do discuss with their groups and there will be a number of reasons why some people cannot commit to going on to a national park authority. So it is a balance to meeting that the requirements of the protocol and, and, and the, the principles within the protocol.
With your consent, Chair. The reason why, you know, I, I, most, well, a large part of my ward is in the national park, the same with, with councillor Liz. But with both, with us both being on the cabinet up to. But with both, there's both being on the cabinet at the time, that's the reason why we were able to take up those positions from our group. There are those factors as well, why some members in the national park on County Council are unable to take up that position on the park.
Geronwen, thank you for that. I'll I'll bring Austin back in.
Yeah, just quickly. For the same reason, our representative until recently on the park was councillor Dylan. And a vast majority of his ward is in within the park, so it made sense for him to represent us. However, he is now on the cabinet. So it's not very easy to do the two jobs. So we decided to appoint Nia Owen instead of him. And, you know, once again, part of Nia's ward is within the park and that's why I decided on her. Okay?
Austin, thank you for that. Right, we'll go to councillor Chris Hughes, who's been waiting patiently. Chris?
Thanks, Chair. I think I'm one of the few members on this committee that have actually served on the park that live outside the park, the park area. And I think, I hope that when I was on it, I brought a balance to that. Most of the elected members live with, that are on the park, live within the park. And there is significant representation there, I think. But we also have to recognise the park is there for its visitors as well. And I, as somebody who, my wife's family are live within the park, a lot of their family live within the park. And so we up in the, we were up in the park regularly, at least once, twice a week sometimes. Sometimes a lot, a lot more, particularly during the summer. So I, and I've been somebody who's walked the mountains an awful lot in the in the the past. So I've always taken the view that it's some, that it's always, it's often good to have the view of somebody, an outsider, somebody who is looking from the outside in and can bring that visitor perspective alongside the residential perspective. So I I would throw that into the mix because, yes, I would say all things being equal, the vast majority of members should represent the people within the park. But I do think it's good to have another, an alternative view in terms of how the visitors to the park see it.
Great. Thank you for those points. Right, have we got any other speakers? Can't see any. In that case, I don't think that we have had a proposal. In which case I'm quite happy to propose that this committee refers the report and the action plan to the Governance and Audit Committee so that they can take steps to ensure that the recommendations included within the action plan are implemented. Do I have a second? I can see councillor Austin Roberts. So in that case, members will vote on it. Can we have a show of hands or those in favour? And if you can keep your hands up clearly. Okay, can we have anyone against? And any abstentions? No, that is covered unanimously. Members, that brings us to the end of this morning's meeting. So thank you for your attendance. Thank you for joining us and I'll look forward to seeing you all next time. Thank you.